Hey, how are you, Ron?
Good, good to see you.
You guys have any going to the project?
It looks good.
But it looks like they're almost, almost done.
We're almost finished.
All good. And sales, sold?
Uh, halfway. So, well, it's about five of them for sure that are under contract.
Yep.
I actually ended up selling it to the developers.
Oh.
Those guys.
So you're all out?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna look towards developing other stuff.
Okay.
Did your mother ever tell you that I had a long conversation with her?
Uh-uh.
She talked about something. Ask her back up.
Yeah.
The nicest thing, Diane.
Yeah, she's here, somewhere. She's got a red puffy on.
Anyway, long story short, this is where you decided to run.
Yeah.
And I was pitching really hard to pitch you because I think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, my support will be further again.
Appreciate that.
And I think we can do more than that.
Awesome.
So, let us hope you got a campaign, you guys have a good time, and everybody did a great job.
Okay.
You guys are the nicest chaplain.
Great.
About you.
Well, I, it's good to hear. I appreciate that. Uh, yeah, I'll, I think I, you, I, I have your, I have two emails for you. Ron Byrd and Ron.
Ron Byrd.
Okay.
He's the best.
He's the best one.
That's my first.
Okay. Well, I'll shoot you down. Maybe we grab a coffee.
I'm gonna do it.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
If we could get everybody to take their seats, please. We'll get started. Candidates, if I can get you at your assigned seats, please. All right, good evening.
Likewise, sir.
Okay, if I could get everybody in their seats and we'll get started. We've got kind of a jam-packed evening tonight and with ten candidates, we want to make sure we hear from each of them. So if you could please take your seats and get settled in, that'd be wonderful. Um, we do have food and beverage in the back. There are note cards on the front table for those who would like to throw some, um, questions into the ring.
Hey Kurt Berry, nice to see you again.
Thank you. All right, just real quick for the candidates, this is Katie. She is your time manager this evening. You each have ninety seconds. Um, when you have thirty seconds left, she'll show the green placard, and when you are finished, she will show the red. Okay? And we want to stay on time tonight, so let's try to be as respectful of that as possible. That'd be great. Um, you will have a chance at the end of the evening to, um, wrap up some closing remarks. So if there is anything that you want to revisit or clarify, you are more than welcome to do so at that time. All right, well, thank you guys so much for coming this evening. My name is Allison Wadey and I'm the Executive Director of the Vale Chamber. Um, this is our, we've been doing this since 2013, so thank you all for coming out and coming each year in and, in and out. It's been great. Um, just a couple things, I wanted to say thank you to our presenting sponsor, which is the Vale Board of Realtors. They have sponsored this event since 2013, so we are very grateful to them for helping us to pull this off. I also want to, um, thank TV8 Vale, uh, who's here, and they are live streaming the event tonight on Facebook. There will be recordings available afterwards, but if you want to text any friends or anybody who cannot be here tonight, they can see that on Facebook at the Town of Vale website as well as TV8 Vale, um, page on Facebook. Uh, I also want to thank the Vale Daily for their support and the Town of Vale, um, as well. So, um, and then I told you about the questions, and I wanted to thank the candidates. I don't, I don't know if there's ever been ten candidates that have run for town council. Here we go. Yeah. Um, and real quickly, we have them in seats one through ten. We have Pete Cyber Jr., Jonathan Stauffer, Nico Sayag, Jermaine Waits, Catherine Middleton, Kirk Hanson, Travis Coggan, Barry Davis, Kim Newberry Rediker, and Brian Stockmar. And I would like, thank you, yeah, might as well. And then, um, I wanted to introduce our moderator for this evening. His name is Douglas Smith. Uh, he's a relatively new resident of Vale, but we're very happy to have him. He brings more than twenty-five years of experience managing government and private sector organizations that have excelled in advocacy, coalition building, new business development, communications, public policy, and corporate social responsibility, responsibility efforts in the U.S. and around the world. He's a frequent public speaker as well as an on-air expert on numerous networks including CNN, Fox News, and CGTN. And I do have the pleasure of serving with him on the Commission for Special Events, uh, and he's just an all-around great guy. So, without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Douglas, and we'll get rolling.
You forgot TV8, frequent on TV8 tunes. Oh, did you? Okay, perfect. So I've always aspired to be Anderson Cooper. So I'm gonna do my best, Anderson Cooper tonight, and see how we can do. First of all, having been around politics, you know, most of my life, I just also want to echo, "Thank you." Because it is hard to step up and say, "I'm gonna make a difference," and do what you're doing. And so, win or lose, and I've been around a lot of winners, and I've been around even more losers, uh, it's amazing what you're all doing. So, you know, I'm pretty excited for tonight. I think we're gonna have a really interesting debate. There are a lot of really important pressing issues in this town. I do want to recognize, uh, we have just two people I want to recognize, is Mayor Chapin is in the audience. Mayor Chapin, I think we can all, we can all thank Mayor Chapin for his leadership and what he's done for this town. I think it's amazing. And we have Chief Henniger as well is here tonight. So without further ado, uh, you have our timekeeper here, you're gonna watch her, uh, we're just, I think you're just gonna start, make it easy, and start with Peter, Pete?
Peter.
All right, Pete, you each get a minute and a half to start, and after you've done your opening statements, I am then gonna do a kind of a round robin of questions. And all I would ask is, with so many people, you kind of respect your fellow candidate. You know, luckily, we're not, uh, in DC. We're in amazing Vale, where we're all polite and kind and welcoming each other, so let's honor our amazing timekeeper here so we can get all the questions in. So with that, Pete, off to you.
Go. I'm Pete Cyber Jr. I live in West Vale, in the Chamonix neighborhood with my partner Kate Allen. Uh, I was lucky enough to grow up here, watch the community and the town come to be what it is now. My four children were born here. Uh, I got back after college, got a job on the ski patrol, and that led to other jobs on, in mountain operations, but eventually I settled into real estate. I've been doing that for thirty years, and that's, I'm in the Lyonshead office at Slyfer. Uh, in terms of community involvement, uh, I've been on the Planning and Environmental Commission the last two years. Part of that was, uh, working with the, uh, Vale, the West Vale Master Plan Advisory Committee, and we've just put that plan in front of the PEC for approval, so there are comments going through now and so on. Uh, I'm also on the Board of the Vale Valley Mountain Trail Alliance, and, uh, we put forth the Adopt a Trail Program about six years ago, and in the wintertime, I like to help out with the Vale Vets when they come to town. There are a couple of, uh, comments I make, guiding values, if you will, that I got from my dad, and the first one is about excellence, and that's really what Vale's always been about. And it started with the international races, then the World Cup and the World Championships and, um, the Burton Open. You look at the summertime and, and the Dance Festival and Bravo Vale, and the, the things that we attract, I think that's, that's part of what Vale is. It's, it's also in how everybody operates their businesses and, and hopefully how, uh, how we all get to live here in the valley as well. Um, and then the other thought is just community. I think it's important, um... Out of time? Is that what you're saying? Sorry. Should've put a timer on it earlier, sorry folks.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Stauffer. Like many who grew up in Vale, I went away to college, lived in a few other places, and came home with the knowledge that while there are other great places out there, there are few places better than Vale, Colorado, and that it was a place worth protecting and improving. With this in mind, I started Trees for Vale and the Vale Farmers Market, and have been very active in community and wildlands conservation issues. Vale is as much about what was not done as what was done. This facility and the park around it were named in honor of John and Diana Donovan, without whom this park and the RET fund that enabled this, its acquisition would not exist. When the building was being planned, the train was in full motion to build an inhuman concrete box, until Mayor Rod Slyfer announced, "I'd rather see something that came down Vale Pass on two trucks." The result was a beautiful facility we're enjoying this evening. Much of what made Vale a success was a happy accident. However, the things that make it an amazing place to live, buildings that belong in the mountains, the largest free transit system in the country, pedestrian villages, and the protection of over thirty percent of the valley as open space, these things were very much intentional, an idea that if Vale was a great place in which families could live and work, visitors would enjoy it as well. Vale needs that sort of long-term thinking. Our future will be different than our past, but we cannot afford to discard our principles for short-term gain, nor can we employ short-term fixes for things that demand long-term solutions. Vale needs people who can not only move forward boldly, but who can step back, slow down, and if necessary, reconsider. I hope the Vale community will find me equal to the task at hand, and I hope that you will entrust me with your vote. Thank you.
Uh, my name's Nico Sayag. Uh, I've been living in Vale for about eight years. Moved here from right outside DC, Montgomery County, Maryland. Uh, currently, I'm the Manager of Shakedown Bar and, uh, also the Manager of the brand-new Skitown All-Stars Ski Shop in Eaglevale. Um, you know, a few years ago, I was approached with the idea of running for town council, and to be honest, I didn't really think much of it. Don't really have a huge passion for politics, but I, I do have a big passion for this town and everybody who decided to make this place their home. Um, and, you know, the, the more I paid attention to local government, the more I realized I have something to offer Vale, other than just being an awesome ski tuner. Uh, but my main goal through all this is pretty simple. Uh, just, I want to improve the quality of life for everyone who lives here. Um, and I can do that by providing new insight and representation of our workforce, and, and I think we can all agree that we're living through unprecedented times, and, uh, they're creating a need for new ideas. Uh, fresh perspectives is what I can offer. Um, and, you know, I have a unique perspective of life on Vale relative to pretty much everybody up here. I've only ever worked for small, local businesses. Um, I'm not a homeowner, I'm not a business owner, but I'm a hard worker, and I'm open-minded and passionate about, you know, this beautiful town. Uh, and I aim to represent our locals, you know, to serve as an ambassador for the people who are the backbone of this community. Um, they have earned a voice in this town, they deserve a seat at this table, and, uh, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to sit at the table. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jermaine Waits. Um, just before you, with a little bit of my past, you know, I started my first job in Vale, two thousand and seven, you know, and I, I thought that was the way things were. Uh, and my, and then I finally moved to town in two thousand and twelve. And since I moved here, there are things that, that are, things I liked, things I didn't like, and there's just some things I'd like to change. I first started paying attention to Vale Town Council in two thousand and fifteen, uh, when a friend of mine that I worked with had to move three times in one season because that house was sold out from under him. And as a result, you know, he was basically homeless. Uh, I, I feel we could do a better part, uh, in that fashion. I personally live in West Vale, my lovely wife and daughter, which are sitting in the back cabin, but, uh, you know, we just went through unprecedented summer where parking structure was full all the time, businesses were incredibly understaffed, and, you know, it, we have to find a balance somewhere where, where we take care of the business owners, the people who make the businesses run, the shareholders, and everyone else. That's all I got.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. My name is Catherine Middleton, and I am running for town council for many reasons. Um, first of all, Vale is a world-class town and ski resort. The town is a homeworld municipality that has, that was founded on a strong mountain mentality for smart growth and quality of life. I have a strong mountain mentality and appreciate our quality of life. I have lived and worked in Vale since the eighties and have experienced the growing pains firsthand with many of us. I have forty years of experience and I'm part of the backbone of this community. I have skied Vale Mountain and recreated in the area to my heart's content. I've worked for the top three retail establishments in the village and owned two businesses myself. I know how important our business, our businesses are for strong economic vitality and our, in, um, ingrained entrepreneurial spirit. I built a home here, complete with an employee housing unit, and most importantly, I raised my son here, that many of you know. So I know how difficult childcare is. I represent all of what Vale has to offer. The issues it faces today are no different than those it faced us forty years ago. These issues face Colorado as a whole and most of the country, and it all has been exacerbated by COVID. I do not have all the solutions to these issues, but I have confidence in my multi-generational networks to find sensible solutions for positive outcomes affecting our town. So these decisions are important to equally preserve and promote the character and charm of our unique mountain community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kirk Hanson. I'm here tonight to listen to you and also, um, to present my qualifications for town council. Um, I have a strong connection to Vale. This has been my home for thirty-three years. Julie and I and our boys moved to Vale from Los Angeles in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, Julie started in accounting business, and I and I worked for tech companies and traveled two to three weeks out of every month, for a lot of years, uh, working on computer system projects. Our two boys went to school here, they went to ABC preschool, they went to Red Sandstone Elementary, they went to Battle Mountain High School. We're a founding family of the Eagle County Charter Academy, and I have served on multiple boards over the years, including, uh, the Eagle County Planning Commission, uh, the Vale Rec District, which I'm, I'm back on, uh, again now, Special Events Committee, the Vale Licensing Board, which is the liquor board, Vale Planning and Environmental Committee, uh, Vale Chapel, and also, for the last five years, I worked, worked just wild as a red jacket on the mountain in the winter. Um, I'm running in Vale because Vale's an incredible, uh, town and amazing location. You look at the valley today with the colors, it just reminds you where we live. Um, but I do think Vale has the potential to be a, a better community than it is now. I'm running because of some unfinished civic business that I'll talk about later, and, uh, I'm also running because I don't have to do an eight-to-five job anymore, so I have more time. So, I'm semi-retired. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Travis Coggan, and like Kirk, I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight. I attended Red Sandstone Minter Middle, Vale Mountain School, I played hockey at Dobson, raced in ski club, and participated in Devo as well as the local youth soccer programs. I'm also the former president of the Vale Valley Young Professionals Association, although I did take a gap between high school and that, uh, little assignment in the thirties, or in my thirties. I'm seeking reelection because I believe I bring a pragmatic approach to the town council and have worked hard over the past four years to find balance with other council members as we tackle our community's challenges. I want to build on and utilize the experiences I've gained in the past four years on council to collaborate with other council members, community leaders, and business partners to address the challenges that we face, and there are many. I want to create more housing opportunities for locals, ensure we maximize the Vale Reinvestment Authority funds so that we can finish the Civic Area Plan, or at least get it started within the next ten years, and finalize the West Vale Master Plan. Both are key to our future. I want to continue to support local businesses and our community members as we all navigate safely through what the new normal has become with COVID, and I would want to continue to work with council and staff to provide the excellent municipal services Vale is known for worldwide, as we continue to pursue the town's vision to be the premier international mountain resort region. Thank you.
My name's Barry Davis. I'm a, I'm the father of a first grader at Red Sandstone. Uh, I'm owner-operator of a small, local business. Uh, I'm an employer, uh, live in Chamonix. A lot of the issues that we're gonna be talking about tonight are the issues I'm talking about with my friends and family, um, around the dinner table almost every night. They're not abstract. I'm still ducking to parents who are wondering what they're gonna do about childcare, where they're gonna send their kids, fellow friends who work for businesses or own businesses who struggle and wonder where their employees are gonna come from. Um, I've spent my time over the years, uh, serving on Vale's CSE Commission on Special Events and volunteering whenever possible, and I like to think that I'm part of a rich tradition of Vale that I think we might be losing a little bit of, and that's people that moved to Vale and stuck because this was a place of great opportunity for people that wanted to work hard. I'm, you know, moved here like a lot of people with, with absolutely nothing as soon as I got the chance, and I worked really hard and I was able to buy a house, and I'm talking to waiters and ski shop kids today, and they're not seeing that opportunity to buy a house or, or live here or make it stick, and I see those as the people that we need to evergreen our town, the people that are gonna be the business owners, the people that are gonna be the thinkers, the workers, the hustlers, the people we want to keep that evergreen our town and take Vale forward with excellence.
I'm Kim Newberry Rediker, and aren't we lucky to have such a great slate of candidates up here? I feel lucky to sit with these people. Um, I moved to Vale in nineteen ninety-two. My career has been focused on hospitality management, and I'm currently the Assistant General Manager at Antlers at Vale. Raised my two kids here, they both went to the local schools. I love to ski and snowboard. I love to golf and hike and fish. Um, just a little of my experience, I served eight years on Vale Town Council, and I served twelve years on the Vale Local Housing Authority. I've been on the Vale Rec District Board for the past eight years. I've been on Commission on Special Events for the last six years, and I've been on the Vale Economic Advisory Council since two thousand and eleven, and I also, um, currently serve on the Colorado Real Estate Commission by appointment of Governor Polis. Um, I'm running for town council because I truly believe that I understand the commitment and energy required to do a good job in the role, and I have the management skills and experience to do the job properly. We have so many serious issues facing us. I'm so concerned about our water and air quality and infrastructure needs such as workforce housing, high-quality childcare, um, and transportation and parking, and we need a council that will continue to build on what we've done over the past few years that's forward-thinking and careful in its deliberations, and I can, uh, be part of that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Stockmar. I was elected to a two-year term on the Vale Town Council in two thousand and nineteen. Prior to that, I served on the Planning and Environmental Commission for two years and chaired it, for two terms, and chaired it during my second term. I serve on the Eco Transit Authority Board and on the Vale Economic I serve on the Eco Transit Authority Board and on the Vail Economic Advisory Council. I was born in Colorado. My family and I have been part of the Vail community since 1963. We've witnessed the evolution of Vail from the days of the Vail Village Inn, the Lodge at Vail, a couple of gas stations, and the Coors Light Gondola, to the world-class resort that it has now become. I taught skiing, both full-time and part-time, over a span of 18 years, but my real career took precedence. For the first part of my career, I practiced corporate finance and securities law as a partner in one of the country's largest law firms, working primarily in Denver, New York, California, London, and Tokyo. I retired from that practice about 30 years ago. I have an advanced degree in economics and turned to economic consulting after recovering from an illness that I contracted while working in Japan. My primary clients have been private banks in London. I was preparing to retire from consulting when Brexit was passed, and all of my client banks moved either to Frankfurt or Brussels. That made it a good time to hang up on my, to hang at my calculator and come home. I would like to see Vail adopt a comprehensive ethics and conflict of interest code, just as most of our peer communities have done. We also need to revise our building codes to fire-harden our town before a major fire engulfs us. My other major issues for the town include good economic stewardship, which our town staff has done admirably and very well. And I want to, want us to recognize that, that true living wages are necessary to retain and attract good employees. I sincerely ask for your support and vote for reelection to Town Council.
So we're going to go through a series of questions while we have as much time as we can. I'll start with you, Brian. I'll reverse it. We'll start with you.
I thought I was going to be sitting out on this.
Well, you have the best view, so actually...
Oh, it's a good, well, I've got a great view of the town here.
You always have to look at the upside, right? For upside, upside.
Yes.
You know, like, like any person preparing for a debate, you talk to your best advisors and peer groups, and for me, it was my daughter. So my 15-year-old is a sophomore here in town and loves living here, but really pays attention. We've been fortunate to live in lots of parts of the world. And an issue that she is a 15-year-old has come to me is housing. And she is concerned as to, you know, the housing situation, why are people not able to find what they want? Attainable homes, you addressed many of you in your opening comments. You know, the Town Council, you have an annual pass, putting Val U2A on for November. So do you support 2A? And what are your thoughts on the Vail 27 Plan and how you will look for to fix the affordable housing issue in the town?
Do I have an hour? On, I voted for putting 2A on the ballot because I think it's important that the town of Vail and the residents and the taxpayers have an opportunity to make that decision. And it's not a decision that we should make at the council level, it's a decision that all of our voters should make. Housing is one of a, one leg of a four-legged stool in my mind. It's not the crisis issue that it's been made out to be unless we regard it as a crisis issue that's been here for the last 50 or 55 years. Nothing has changed. We need more housing. But I also think more importantly, we need all of our employees in the town and for the town of Vail, and I think the town of Vail does a pretty good job as an entity. We have to make sure that our employees are paid a living wage to live in this community. Otherwise, they have to work multiple jobs. It's a miserable existence for people who are underpaid. I also believe that we need adequate childcare for employees so that they don't have the panic of leaving kids at home or in situations that are uncomfortable. We need adequate healthcare for employees. And finally, yes, we need housing. And I supported housing up on the, supported housing where the residents of Main Vail will be built. I voted against the recent agreement because I don't think the agreement, I'm an old lawyer. I don't think the agreement is well-drafted or appropriate. But I do support housing and always have supported housing, and I did so when I was on the PEC.
Thank you. So from the time I was on the Vail Local Housing Authority until now, the conversation has been the need for a dedicated source of funding for affordable employee workforce housing, whatever term you'd like to give it. So in that regard, I do support the initiative and the need for a dedicated, dedicated source of funding. In terms of the 2027 Housing Plan, I do believe we need to revisit that and extend it so that it adequately addresses the timeframe that the tax is being collected for, or at least part of it. We don't know what opportunities may come before us in 20 or 25 years, but we could extend it out another five to 10 years. I had the pleasure of joining the Vail Local Housing Authority today, just listening into their Zoom session. And it'd been a while since I'd been in one of those meetings, and I am impressed with the members of that authority and their ability to think into the future for our town in terms of housing.
Well, I'm typically not a fan of a tax increase. I do support 2A. Vail hasn't increased its sales tax in my lifetime, and I feel that this small increase is going to create a fund of, a pool of funds that we can deploy immediately. I like the way it's written because it's going to allow our town and our council to be creative and nimble in the way we deploy those funds, whether it's immediately into Indeed to chip away at our, our bold 2027 plan that's been laid out for us, or to potentially take advantage of opportunities down valley. Fixing Vail's situation is going to require a multipronged approach, and it is a huge issue. But I think the 2A solves a lot of that, gives us funds to deploy relatively quickly.
I am 100% in support of 2A. That's why I voted for it with the other six council members. It, it's, just as Kim said, it's a dedicated fund for housing. The goal is that it will free up money out of the general fund so that we can use those monies for, you know, other purposes that are, you know, excellent community services, parks, roads, bridges, wages, to have our staff be able to live here, just as Brian's bringing up. But, you know, the, the 2027 Plan is wonderful. It's 1,000 units. We have a 5,000-unit deficit. So we need to look beyond 2027. And the way that the 2A initiative is written gives us that flexibility, as Barry said, so that we can look in the town but also out of the town. We can't solve our problem here in town. You know, it's, it's just not feasible. We couldn't build that much if we wanted to, and, and no one wants to, to do that. You know, it would ruin the character of our community. You know, people have brought up, oh, it's, it's a lot of money. It is a lot of money. It could potentially be $215 million over 30 years based on historic sales tax rates. But Timber Ridge is 70 million bucks right off the bat. You know, that's just a small dent. That's 200 units. So I think the flexibility it gives us with Indeed, with potential down-valley partnerships, with new development, with buying down other units, it's wonderful. Wages won't solve this problem. There've been studies in Hong Kong where they're also strapped for real estate. When you raise wages, it's great, but unless prices of housing drop, it's not a real wage growth for individuals because landlords are paid on the first of the month. And so that is all that happens is your rent goes up.
So I struggle with 2A. I'm not a high taxation person. Travis mentioned 2A can raise $200 million over, you know, a long period of time. That's a lot of money. I do support Vail's housing initiatives. I was on the PEC when the Chaminde Town Homes went through. That's an innovative program, the 32 towns, town homes over in Westvale. They sold out, and there was a lottery for the units. I think Middle Creek Village was done well. I think the Red Sandstone Apartments was appropriate. So I don't object to the town getting into the housing business. So reluctantly, I do support 2A. I understand, I understand the need for housing in Vail. I understand the quality of the experience of living in Vail is very important, both for the workers as well as our guests. But keep in mind, we have five other towns to the west of us, and there's nothing wrong with, you know, commuting from Avon or commuting from Eagle Vale. I commuted to Avon for several years when I was building houses. So, you know, let's, let's get beyond just, just Vail. I mean, it's our valley, right? Many of us live in different locations. So, so net-net, I do support 2A. Thank you.
Yes, I am in support of 2A. The existing list of priorities for potential housing developments in Vail will need to have public-private partnerships that will take priority to move forward, and we need a dedicated fund to contribute to that. We have, we have parcels available for Everveil, the Everveil Development, the Westvale parcels along Chaminde Lane, the Hotel Talisa Tennis Courts, the Big Horn Sea Dot Parcel in East Vale, and the Ruth Lodge Site. All of these need to be public and privately funded. The focus for these residential housing units is on middle-income year-round and seasonal worker households. These folks are vital to the guest experience. The funds available for housing are limited, so the public-private partnerships are key to begin work on these projects, as well as development within the Civic Area Plan and Westvale Master Plan for more de-restricting housing. Both are, the Vail Housing Plan 2027 is a proactive approach with concise goals to acquire those additional 1,000 units. So I am fully in support of this. I think it's an excellent start to a big pot that we need to fill to get more employee housing in this town for year-round and seasonal.
I too agree with 2A because, you know, you, you go around town, you talk to folks, your friends, acquaintances, people you know for years, and their rent's going up $1,000 a month this year. I think that's a little excessive. Is it greed-driven? No, it's, it's, it's... I'm sorry. You know, it's just a struggle that, you have to deal with supply and demand. Supply and demand. So with that being said, with 2A, you know, $215 million over 30 years, you know, that should be able to, to build up. But, you know, like they say, if you build it, a day will come. So it's a great start, but at the same time, we need further initiatives and to work with our partner communities down valley, not necessarily too far because that's unfair, but work with our partner communities who have the same issues of their own to, to address this issue.
I am not in support of 2A. The housing crisis is not going to be solved by just throwing money at it. I mean, even if it were, the $4 million in annual revenue from the tax is not going to produce the results that we need. We don't have enough space here to build an abundance of new housing for people to buy, to rent. We need to address the cause of the problem. We need to, and we need to create appealing tax incentives for homeowners who choose to rent their property to, you know, people who are full-time Vail residents. The town should incentivize and promote lease-to-own properties, our land contract programs, something like that. There are other options other than, you know, raising taxes that locals are going to just have to be paying for. We were not the cause of the problem. It's the second homeowners, it's the short-term rentals. We need to just get a hold of that. We need limits on short-term rentals, and the locals should not be shouldering the burden when we're not the cause of the problem.
I believe you have to have the income to support your state's desires. That being said, I find 2A far, far, far too broad in its construction currently. I don't think you can address housing in this town without first addressing the most recent crisis-making issue, which is short-term rentals and VRBL. This particular trend has exacerbated prices on the ground. It has enabled people to basically finance second-home purchases through, through rentals, which in turn are taxing our infrastructure and taxing our neighborhoods to the extent that they're making it a very unpleasant place to be. I would be in favor of, I am in favor of letting the people decide on a funding mechanism for, for housing, but as I said, I think 2A is far too, too broad in its construction. And what I'm very worried about in the long term, or even in the near term, because it has already been suggested, is that these funds will be used to build housing on open space. Some of the targets have been the middle bench of this park and also the ninth fairway on the golf course. Thank you.
So that was a no on 2A then?
That's a no on 2A. Thank you.
So I'm a yes on 2A. A lot of the, the housing aspect of it, I think, has already been elaborated on. I'll look for a moment at the tax side of it. We're at 8.4% right now. If we raise it that half point, we're going to be in the middle of a list of 10 Colorado mountain towns, including Aspen and Steamboat and Winter Park. So it's not going to have that great an impact on that side. On the other hand, I agree with what everybody was saying about having the, the ability to fund projects that are going to come up. And I don't think we need to look at going to open space. There, there's Timber Ridge. The Westvale Master Plan will identify a number of different opportunities. Nobody, two years ago, we weren't talking about the residences at Main Vail, and here we are. We've, we've got that in the works. So we need to have that dedicated funding. And when you go to, to look at projects down valley, I've said before, where would we be without Miller Ranch? There'll be more, hopefully, of that to come. We need to be able to tell our partners, this is our source of money. We, we are here and we're ready to work with you. So I'm, I'm firmly in favor of 2A.
Yeah, a lot of you have referenced employment and living wage, et cetera. You walk through the village any given day, and every single store you see, every single restaurant says, help wanted. So I'd love, and if you want to be briefer, we can, however you want to do it, not to overuse your sweat, but we'll go back to you, Pete. You know, a couple of thoughts on you is how do you balance that? You know, stores are closing a day a week, two days a week. Restaurants can't do lunch service or close the whole day a week. So with, against this backdrop of housing that we just talked about, paying people a living wage, how do we work to try to staff our restaurants and stores so our local business owners can continue to prosper?
Well, and that's, you know, what we just talked about with 2A, things that we can be doing towards the future, but there's going to be a lag. We're going to get that money, with the exception of Vail Indeed. That's money that could be used towards Vail Indeed sooner, and that'll be helpful. It's not going to address the issue that you're talking about. I think we need to be looking down valley for other, other resources. In doing that, then we need to have a transportation system that functions, that, that will allow us to bring people in. The fact that, I think it's Gypsum is the last of the towns in the valley that needs to sign the memorandum of understanding for the Regional Transit Authority, and that, that will help us. We've got the, they have a consultant that helped put together RFTA over in Pittkin County. So I think that's, that's going to be helpful as well. I guess, I'll be interested to see the results of the Nexus Study telling us just how great the impact is of the Airbnb and the VRBO rentals. I don't know where, you know, there's a whole spectrum. There are the people that use it themselves or rent it long-term. You have the, the ones that I, I haven't run into. I'm not doubting that they're out there that are rented all the time, short-term. But I think a lot of those are also in the middle where people are, are looking to do it just part of the time, defray their costs of ownership, allow them to use it when it's not busy here. So in the short term, that should be revisited, that should be looked at, but we don't have that information.
You have a pressure on my question.
No, no. As, as a business owner, I would say, the demographic shift that's happening in Vail is not isolated. The demographic shift that's occurring here is occurring everywhere in the country. People are having trouble finding people to work for them in New York. The nature of work has changed. You can make more money as a YouTube influencer than you can as a waiter. That being said, at our store, we've increased, increased salaries quite a bit over the last two years, just because I want my people to be able to afford to live here. And I don't want them to be able to afford to live here and scrape by. I want them to be able to afford to live here and have a decent life. And I think transportation definitely enters into that picture. EcoTrend, or whatever becomes of EcoTrend, needs to be as efficient as the town system. Free transportation down valley is huge, and, but I think businesses also need to step up. Years ago, there was a proposal, I think my uncle made it, to have a group of housing available, and maybe this could be part of the buy-down program, made available to business owners. And as the business owners say, sold it, if they didn't sell it to the business, with their business, they had to put it back into the pool to have it continue to be core housing or staff housing.
or staff housing.
So in regards to the employment crisis, I think it's a direct effect of the housing crisis. We just don't have the people here in town to work because they don't have a place to live. And, you know, there are a lot of people who have left town to go buy, you know, a house in Durango, because you can't afford to buy a house in Durango as opposed to here. And so that brings me back to the short-term rental situation, where if we start limiting the short-term rentals and we take the housing that is already there, that sits vacant for most of the year, and figure out a way to get actual locals, year-round locals, to live in those houses, in those apartments, then we will have more people in town to work. And I mean, it's just kind of crazy what... The median individual income in Vale is just around $40,000. The average home cost is between $1.2 and $1.7 million. That is out of control. People don't want to stay here very long because they don't think they can live here for very long. They can't afford it. And if we can make it easier to find a place to live and easier to live, then people will stay and there will be workers. So that's my take on that.
It's going to sound like being a dead horse, but again, there are points on the short-term housing. You know, we had a chance where people were talking in town, and we could have been a vanguard to limiting that. And none of these problems are actually exclusive of Vale. Like, post-COVID, there's businesses nationwide that cannot find employees, and what the reason for that, I mean, is debatable, but at the end of the day, you know, Vale needs to do a better image of marketing, you know, to bring employees in, or some kind of campaign, because, you know, if people don't know, or they're just sitting at home watching Netflix, they're just going to sit at home watching Netflix. Again, what Jonathan said about transportation, definitely a big deal in that, the Transportation Authority that's coming up, fantastic, but at the same time, you know, you're... Some of these people work 12, 14-hour days. Now you're adding an hour commute at each end, so now you're working 16 hours, and we all know how it is, late December, early January, where you're in, and then you're back to sleep, and then you're back at work. And that's really no quality of life, even if it is only two weeks. With that being said, you know, there's no easy answer to it at the end of the day. And, you know, it's multi-pronged to get it taken care of.
This is a national problem. This is not at all unique to Vale. What we have is a beautiful place for people to live. We can work with our business community. We can talk about benefit packages. We can talk about the childcare that the town is already working on. The town staff professionals have done a really good job with that. They're implementing programs. They have a fund that is dedicated to childcare, so we can get young families here. This Regional Transportation Authority is also a wonderful opportunity to explore down-valley options for housing and to be able to provide some free community shuttle services back and forth to hopefully get some of those employees from down valley to come up here. We have a product here to offer that's better than living in so many other places. I really think that if we can boost those employee incentive packages with contributions to the business owners, so that they can provide parking, we do some outreach on carpooling and ride-sharing, offer free shuttles, have a better schedule, and assess those needs, I think that we would... It would help this employee housing crisis... Or, excuse me, employment crisis that we have. Every one of us has worked in town. We are short at work. All of us are working more hours. That's part of what this lifestyle entails, but we still get to go home to this. So I feel that we will have those people show up soon. It's just... It's a national problem. It's a COVID problem, and I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know exactly how it will look, but I think we can communicate with our business leaders and find good solutions.
So I'm not a big government guy, but I agree with Catherine's comments. So it's quality of life. Wages are going up in the entire United States, supply and demand. But I think it's quality of life issues. Yes, it's housing, it's recreation, it's skiing. It's the overall package. You know, there's millions of people around the world that have a little piece of Vale in their heart because they came here for a wedding or came here for skiing in the winter. And, you know, they're going to come back, and their children are going to come back, and their grandchildren are going to come back. So if they can find a place to live in the valley, not necessarily Vale, but hopefully Vale, if they have transportation, if they have restaurants to go to, again, quality of life issues, and again, wages are going up, I don't see many jobs in the Vale daily that are less than $15, $16 an hour. So, thank you.
I mean, yeah, just as Jermaine said, unfortunately, I think this is kind of kicking a dead horse. I think that the correlation between housing and wages is direct. We have an undersupply of housing, and you have landlords with monopolistic power with how they set their rates. So until we are able to address that, you know, whether it's more housing in Vale, or more housing in Minterne, or more housing in Avon or Edwards, we just need more housing to put pressure on landlords to, you know, they're going to have to compete with new product, and that'll be a combination of competing on wage or rates, it'll be actually having to improve their units, make sure that all the appliances work, if they even have appliances, clean the carpets, all of that. You know, transportation is a part of it, that's wonderful, but I don't think having a better bus service is going to solve the labor issue, because it's not like there's not enough employees just in Vale. There's not enough employees, you know, throughout the valley and nationwide. Wages are already increasing in the valley. You know, you're seeing it just as you walk up and down Bridge Street. They're paying more for bussers, they're paying more for servers. You know, I hear that some servers are making, you know, close to $100,000 a year. That's great, but there's just not enough of them to keep restaurants open, to keep shops open. So, you know, I think the other challenge that we're also experiencing now is, you know, we're very good at marketing, and we really need to address, you know, the future of how we market Vale. And I think the Destination Management Plan that we're going to be getting next year is going to be very insightful in how we look at that, so that we, you know, balance out our staff and housing and wages with, you know, making sure we don't try to fill the balloon too far so that it pops.
Would you please repeat the question? We've gone pretty far and fast.
For you, anything. The question was, as you walk through the village, and you see store for store and restaurant for restaurant with employees wanted, and the challenge of what that puts on them, that restaurants can't do lunch service, they're closed an entire day, or stores are only open five days instead of seven days. You know, with the backdrop of housing that we talked about earlier, your thoughts on how we begin to close that gap? In a sense, piggyback off what Travis just said, we are a resort town when it's all said and done, and people come here for an experience, and if we can't be open and serve cocktails or coffee or dinner, there's served things.
Thank you. And Travis touched on the Destination Management Guest Study, and Pete touched on the NEXUS study about STR. I think the fact that we're now starting to take a data-driven approach, and we're starting to look for real answers, and our council's going to be able to navigate from that. I think all these issues, transportation, housing, living wage, fall under something a little bit bigger, and Jonathan touched on it a little bit with a... He called it demographic shift. I think that all these things fall into something that Vale... We need a cultural preservation in a way. How do we attract the kid? All these things go into attracting the people that want to live and work in this town, that it's not a stop for them. I think we've all been into that restaurant where we've known that waiter for 10 years, and that waiter loves his job and loves Vale, and his quality of life includes the pride he takes in this town, the powder dais he gets, the having stake in it, the feeling appreciated. We've all been in a ski shop, and we know the guy that knows the stuff, and we know the guy that's like, I'm here for a season. Those look like they fit. And I think that all these things fall into a cultural preservation, and we have to be careful of them. I do love the idea of us spending the money and having the foresight to put studies in the hands of the experts and having the... Facing whatever realities we're given to navigate from a data-driven approach.
Thank you. Thank you for asking for the question again, Barry. So we're very lucky in not only our town, but in the overall Eagle Valley community. There are a lot of resources and brilliant people coming up with new ideas for our businesses to learn how to attract and retain employees, how to build their culture, how to collaborate on benefits and things like that that can be offered, including the Vale Valley Partnership, the Vale Chamber, you know, just lots of valley-wide resources. At the antlers, we're starting to think outside the box a little bit. How do we get someone to come into town for the times that we need them, and not necessarily for five years or 10 years? And so we're looking... We've talked to several colleges, looking for interns to come in. We provide housing for them. We provide ski passes, we provide benefits, and we're seeing some results from that. I'm always one to admit when I'm not the one with the answer, or necessarily even the smartest person in the room, but that's why we have a council, that's why we have the Vale Economic Advisory Council. And I'm looking forward to hearing from our economists on what some solutions may be. I am happy to see that wages have been going up in the valley. We have so many visitors coming in. We are now able to push rate a little bit in hotels, we're able to push prices a little bit in restaurants that help us pay our employees more.
Paul Krugman is an economist that many of you may have heard of. He once told me that if you were to lay all economists in the country, end to end, you would never reach a conclusion. And that's one of the problems with economics. This is an extraordinarily complex question and a complex issue. There had been touched upon that this is not a Vale problem alone. This is a problem throughout the United States, in fact, throughout the developed world. Demographic and employment trends are changing everywhere, and we don't yet have a clear-cut grasp on why and how, and how to redirect it, as Kim just said. It's very complex. I do think, as I've said, a lot of it is making sure that we pay a competitive living wage. A lot of it is providing childcare. A lot of it is providing for housing or housing supplements. But it is extraordinarily complex. We are doing a NEXUS study on short-term rentals. I had hoped that there would be a moratorium, but that was turned down. The moratorium also may not matter because this is a time of the year that very few people are registering new short-term rentals. And so it may not make a difference that we didn't pass the moratorium. But we did pass a request for a study to really determine what short-term rentals are doing to us. And out of that study, we should have proposals that'll help us address the issue. Frankly, I would like to see our fees high enough that they pay for our software, which they don't right now. I'd also like to see a lodging tax, which is truly a lodging tax and not just a marketing tax, and these are ways we can address short-term rentals.
And I do love Paul Krugman, so thank you. All right, so I've been asking these deep questions. I'm going to give you a little break for a second and give you two short ones, so two 30-second answers. So in 2019, there were 4,221 registered voters in the town of Vale. 25% voted. So in 30 seconds, Brian, why should people turn up to vote in November? How do we get over 25%?
I've been pushing for a long time for a change that we finally have implemented, and that's to stop casual walk-in voting. And we are now part of a unified ballot with Eagle County. I hope... I still don't know what the effect will be. It may be that it makes all of us less attractive or all of us more attractive. But I pushed very hard for unified ballots so that we could cure the turnout issue to the extent possible. People will have a ballot in hand, they won't have to go someplace. And Vi, I love you, and I know you've been running the polling places, but it's vitally important that we have a much larger turnout, and I do think the mail ballot will do that.
Well, the good news is in 2017, I think 75 or 80% voted, so maybe they'll turn out this time. I think the mail ballot helps a lot. The opportunity to still drop it off and see your neighbors on Election Day if you want to is part of that. And of course, having 10 really great candidates hopefully motivates people to get out and vote for their favorites.
Well, now, it's going to be hard to say something different. You guys are going to be in trouble. The mail-in ballot's going to absolutely help, the unified ballot. I also think now, more than ever, we have a real groundswell of younger people in Vale that are fully engaged, care about the future of the town, they see these issues are hitting home for them. Voting in Vale has typically been a... Has not been a... When you look through the names of who has voted, it's typically been a demographic over 50. And I think now you've got a demographic under 30 that is fired up and cares about the future of this town, and I'm interested to see them come to the polls this year.
The mail-in ballot is going to be huge. The unified ballot, I got a lot of feedback after 2017, that people got the one in the county and they were waiting for the other one, and then, you know, the next thing you know, it's over. You know, I really... One thing I've been talking about a lot with people is that, you know, local elections affect your life every day. You know, it's what really matters. CNN doesn't pay attention to it, Fox doesn't pay attention to it, it doesn't get flashy headlines, but these are the issues: wages, housing, transportation. And they're not big global issues, but they're, you know, they're issues that were literally your every single day. You know, it's what affects you. So hopefully people realize that, and hopefully they turn out and vote. You know, however they vote, they're 10 great people, and, you know, and thank you.
So I agree. We have a lot of important issues on the ballot this year. I think it'll drive turnout. I think the consolidated ballot, being able to mail it in in a non-presidential election is going to make a difference, too. So hopefully north of 50% would be my aspiration.
Get-out-the-vote campaigns. Let's all of us who can get together, we can hold town halls. I have two of my fellow classmates from Colorado Mountain College over there who want to sit down and have available materials from all of the candidates so that we can talk to people, and that's what we need to do, is to get people out there. We can have them be able to register. The Vale Homeowners Association has a register-to-vote link right on their letter that they issue at this point weekly. There are so many ways that we can reach our community to get them to get out and vote as a group.
My fifth-grade teacher told me, if you don't vote, you can't complain. Now there's a... Now we have a ton of people complaining. And if we had 25% turnout last time, probably going to get pretty close to 100% this time, as long as you give people information in their hands. Thank you.
Yeah, so what they said. I mean, it's been a rough couple of years here in the whole country, and people are pretty jazzed on the idea of making a change. I mean, look, I'm running for town council here. I never would have thought I would have done that for. And, you know, I'm on the younger side here, and there are a lot of young people in town who are just as fired up as I am, just never thought to run for town council. So, yeah, the mail-in ballots are obviously going to help. People being fired up, that helps. And I had a voter registration drive at Barton Yeti's last night, and I've got a few people registered. It's something, there are things we can do.
I... My father grew up under the Nazis in Austria, so I vote because I believe it's important, and I encourage others to do so. During the last election, Billy got a thing made up, and we hired him out up in the store to encourage people to register to vote. We currently have a QR code on our thing where they can link straight to the Secretary of State's office to get registered, and that was put out by Lindsay over at Two Arrows Coffee, which I think is a great idea. Local elections matter, and that's what that sign says. Local elections matter because what Travis said is true, that most of what happens here is little stuff compared to the global scale, but we have electric buses because people care enough to make that happen. That's addressing climate change. We have a good transportation system. We are trying to protect wildlife in this valley. Local elections matter, so we hope you participate.
The only thing that I would add is that it's not just about voting for the candidates up here. It goes to what Jermaine was saying. If people are complaining, they can't complain if they don't vote, and the big complaint is housing, so it's not just the council race, it's vote yes for Two It's vote yes for Two Way. Get us the money so that we can start getting more done. I think that's a good answer to anybody who has the housing complaint. Get them registered.
Thank you. So, in 1992, then-Governor Clinton was asked an incredibly complex national security question: boxers or briefs? I'm not gonna ask you that, Pete. Next question is, it's gray powder day in Vale. What's your run?
You know, the day that it got, I have to fess up and say, I actually got caught in that two-hour line a couple of years ago in Chair Five. Prior to that, I was with a couple of people, and we were skiing the lower part of Lion's Head, which was uncut all morning. So, my advice is go where everybody else isn't, and I listened to the people I was with. I'll never do that again.
I guess the head wall, and I used to really like Chair Two until they put a six back on it. Now, it became Transit Corridor, but yeah.
My first six years I spent here, I was managing a shop in Lion's Head, and I only got maybe an hour to get up every day. So, Chair 26 Trees, that's my go-to. Can laugh at it all day and be completely satisfied.
Perfect. So, you can take my daughter's son off, be there with her anymore.
I got it. North Woods all day. Period.
I'm a ski bum. Rasputins.
North Star with Julie.
How much powder? Is this, are you talking prima cornice? If it's like two inches, I'll take two inches on top of a freshly groomed Simba all day long. Otherwise, it's skier's ride, opera.
I'll be with Travis and Op Re Voo, and we'll both be chasing Pete.
Well, I always ski out of Lion's Head, so Uzoglade to Kangaroo Cornice, and then Depending from there, but I always make my way to Yonder Trees. It's my favorite.
First thing I do is look at the grooming report and find out what has not been groomed, because I think this mountain is massively overgroomed. But I love straight shot. I love windows. I love anything steep and deep.
Perfect. All right, you gave me a perfect segue there, Brian. Diplomacy is a big part of this job. We live in this amazing town, but you have a lot of constituents. You go just this way, you have Vale Resorts to contend with. We have our amazing-town staff. You have your constituents. Who said 100% is gonna turn out? Because 100% of the constituents are gonna turn out. You know, we have tourists. We have business owners. So, spend a little time, Brian, talking to me about how you balance all these important groups that all have very different interests in a diplomatic way to move the town forward in positive ways.
Two parts to that answer. First, you listen. And so many people don't bother to listen to what other people are saying to them. They let it go in one ear and out the other, or just over their heads. They don't listen. And it's been vital to me in my career to learn to listen. Secondly, my career's been as a negotiator. And when you listen to both sides, one of the things you learn very early, and when you work as a negotiator, everybody has to walk away from the table with something. And everybody has to be, to some degree, happy, because you know that everybody isn't going to be entirely happy, because no one is gonna get everything. But that's how you balance negotiation, and I think that's what we need to do.
I would say not just listening, but seeking out opinions from people that maybe are reluctant to come to meetings or to weigh in. So, you really do have to get out into the public and seek out those opinions. And then gathering data and making fact-driven decisions versus decisions based on emotion.
Vale is a finite commodity, and a lot of people lay claim to it, and it is hard to manage. The two to my left definitely touched on some very important things: listening to your constituents and making data-driven decisions. Our town has also always done a great job of casting a big vision. And I often think about the mission and vision that are posted on the wall of council chambers, and hopefully, I'll have those to guide me in the future.
It's a lot of listening, but also a lot of asking questions, reading everything that's sent your way, having that coffee, reaching out to offer to have that coffee, walking through town and engaging with, you know, the people to see the experience, trying to recreate what the experience is they're talking about, what their issue is, so you can truly try to walk in their shoes and understand what challenge they are struggling with, or what they're trying to achieve, what new thing they might be thinking about. I think, yeah, it's just empathizing with people and understanding that it could be the biggest thing in the world to them, but also being able to step back and look at the whole community and realize that our task is to balance many masters out there. As you said, it's the multi-billion-dollar corporations. It's the multi-billion-dollar government entity of SEDOT that is a major player in town, as well as the, you know, the little third grader that is walking over the pedestrian bridge and making sure they have a safe experience and talking to their parent about how, you know, they're experiencing Vale. So I think it's trying to truly put yourself in each person's shoes and understand what they're saying, and then balance that with what is best for the greatest number of people.
So, ditto. You know, seek to understand, then be understood. I'm kind of in the beginning of the seventh inning of my life game here. I don't get angry much anymore. I do like to listen. I do like to empathize. Vale is complex. We do have issues. We do have problems. But there's a heck of a lot on the positive side that I'd like to acknowledge and see every day, so.
Yeah, I agree. Travis, all of you have really touched on the main points here. You know, my objective is to bridge that gap through, you know, being empathetic and finding our common ground for long-term strategies that hands not only the town of Vale, but the mountain. Because Vale Mountain and this town are the premier name and the signature resort for Vale Resorts. So really, we are the link to the mountain, and it is where the guest experience begins and ends. We have to be able to communicate with our business leaders and the employees in this town, as well as all of the citizens, to understand on a common ground how, as a council, we can be more engaged with them and their needs, so that we can come to good understanding of what the next steps are to have, to make smart decisions. And that includes about growth. That includes about the environment, Jonathan, wildlife, and all the other things that are important to this community as a whole, and why we live here.
I didn't do this very well at the beginning, but I actually love to talk about myself. But I didn't. And ever since I decided to run for town council, and I just ask people their opinions just generally, sometimes I get positive reviews, sometimes I get really negative reviews. But no matter what they say, you know, I listen to them and try to walk a day in their shoes. And at the same time, I try to get them to walk a day in my shoes. And then somewhere, we meet in the middle. And that's how I proceed on a town council.
Yeah, along with communication, which is key, I think that, starting with the happiness of the locals and just listening to the locals, trying to figure out what's gonna make everybody in our community happy, is going to kind of leak into everything else. If we have happy employees, we're gonna have happy visitors. We're gonna have happier business owners. If all, you know, if all the employees are happy to come into work and show up and like their jobs, it's gonna be better for everything. You know, we, if we start from the bottom, you know, all the employees in town, that's the backbone of Vale. We wouldn't have the Vale experience without all of our employees waking up early, going into work, and trying really hard to make it a good experience for everyone. If we don't have that, then we're not gonna have happy guests, and then we're all screwed. So, yeah, just communication and making sure that we're taking care of our local community.
I like to start out with what we have in common when I run into disagreements. We all love this place. We all love being in the mountains. I'm delighted that our politics hasn't gotten so schismed as our national politics, and I hope it always stays that way. I think people have to keep in mind that we need to talk with each other and listen to each other, rather than just shouting at each other over social media. We do have a lot to be thankful for, and I think that is where you start a conversation. Where are we? What do we have to be thankful for? And where do we wanna be? How do we make it better for everyone?
Well, and that pretty much starts with Jonathan and I, because I can tell when you spoke, that was what I had in mind too, is that there's a lot more that unites us than divides us. We're all passionate about this valley, about this town, about what is, what it has been, but also what it can be. And we all wanna get there. I think that it's, you never know where you're gonna hear the really important nugget. And to try to keep your ears and mind open for that and give that person the time that they need to explain things to you is important. So, you know, it starts here.
Many of you in your council talked about two big topics: transportation and the environment. The town recently announced a pilot program with e-bikes for critical employees. I think I used to term wrong, don't correct me, but a big step. But what are your thoughts, Pete, as we look to the future? Obviously, this year was an off-year with COVID, and the parking on South Cornish Road, et cetera. But how do we balance our transportation needs and clearly the importance of the environment and how we protect it looking into the future?
This gets to how connected things are. What's held back the employee housing projects like Timber Ridge in the past is the parking requirement. And every time we look at a new building, we try to trim that back. There is a secondary that allows it to be economically feasible, but there's a secondary benefit environmentally. And it will, it's just getting past that step. Every, the people that live in the Lions Ridge homes aren't sure they've got enough parking when you talk to them. But that was a paring back from Timber Ridge, and the residences, you know, will be the same sort of trimming back again. So there, you hope that the transportation system can be developed where it allows people to make their way to work and back without spending that extra two hours, all that sort of thing. It's, uh... Is that an effective answer?
That's your answer, whatever you want it to be. All I would say is, it's a little bit more possibly on the threat. Many of you have talked about the threat to the environment in this valley and the challenges. What, as a council member, this is for all of you, I'm not giving them extra credit here, you know, how are you, we'll work to that, these threats.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question a little bit, but I would say that one of the, and one of the other candidates mentioned the impact, or potential impact of a fire here. That's a huge issue for us. Needs to be addressed in tandem with the Forest Service and Vale Resorts. I'll leave it at that.
I think Vale has a long tradition of environmental stewardship and leadership. I would like to see that expanded. I believe that we could probably put together about four megawatts on top of the transportation centers. As to transportation, I think, I mean, ultimately, cars are stupid. They take up way too much room when they're parked. They take up way too much room on the road. And yeah, we're all forced to live with them to some degree, but I think the current council made a really great choice out on Vale Valley Drive to narrow that down and make it more friendly for bikers. I'd like to see that continue throughout town. I believe that we have an opportunity to increase the people coming up from Denver, the skiers who come up from Denver, increase their use of bus tang and the new system that SEDOT has proposed. And I think that's an awesome opportunity that will get people, get cars off the road, get pollution out of the atmosphere, and hopefully, protect some wildlife on the way.
First off, I think Vale's done a great job with our bus routes, and the buses themselves, the hybrids, the electric buses. I mean, that's fantastic. It's not necessarily all about environment at this point, but we don't really have much available transportation at night, which is affecting a lot of restaurant workers and people who work in bars and stuff like that. Buses stop running at midnight right now, and people don't get out of work until, a lot of people don't get out of work until after midnight. If you rode the bus into work, there's no way to get home. And there, you know, yeah, cars are not great, but I will take a car, I'll take a cab home from work if I have to, instead of walking through, you know, 10-degree weather. But you can't get cabs or anything anymore right now. And if we just had a little bit more access to transportation, you know, carpooling, anything like that, something we can work on for people to be able to get home from work, I think that's very important. But as far as the state, the town provided transportation, I think we're doing a really good job in terms of the environment, and we should just continue going that direction with the buses and things like that.
Just for all of you, we got a request from the audience that the candidates all speak slightly louder.
And right into, right into your microphone helps a lot.
Now, move the microphone close to your mouth.
Kevin, aren't you here to tell us that? Where's Kevin Foley? Balancing transportation and the environment.
On Nico's note, yes, the town is doing a great job with the transportation system, but the town could also reach out to its visitors and second homeowners and encourage them to use the public transit system, and also educate bikers that they are vehicles and do have to stop at a stop sign just past the structure, except like blowing through it, almost being hit. But, you know, the town could do better education, because like when I first moved to town, you know, I had to learn the bus system myself, and you know, you end up going that way when you're supposed to go this way, and vice versa. And I think with that, then we'll have higher number of people using the public transit system, reducing the amount of cars, and you know, we won't have cars parked up and down South Cornish Road every weekend. Thank you.
Okay. I am a sustainability's proponent, and so I'm gonna do a huge plug right now for the Vale Sustainable Destination Stewardship Plan. This is about guest experiences and cultural heritage, quality of life, with shared values that promotes environmental stewardship. This Love Vale program is dedicated to the environmental stewardship, year-round economic development, cultural heritage, low-impact transportation, energy efficiency, waste reduction, public health and safety, workforce housing, climate adaptation, and sustainability education. So touching on all of what you guys have said. I wanna find ways that encourage more public participation to reach these goals, so that we have greater community involvement and understanding about our impact and how we as a community can help to achieve these goals and to be proud of them. The criteria that our community must adhere to are programs that preserve the natural environment in our mountain community and respects our open spaces and wildlife, some things I think we all care very much about. I'm also committed to taking a deep dive into reducing our carbon emissions by strengthening our partnerships with Holy Cross Energy to achieve 100% clean energy by 2030, and that will help offset some of the carbon that we have coming out of the heated streets. So, I just think we need to also, again, incentivize businesses to encourage carpooling and rideshare programs and parking programs that provide specific privileges for the workforce. But this is another community effort that we will address, and it will get better regardless of whether we're on town council or not.
The transportation model in the US, I think, is gonna change dramatically over the next 20 years. I went to an opening of a rec center in Walker, Minnesota, a couple summers ago, and they had the local Indian tribe, Native American tribe there. And the chief spoke afterwards, and he talked about his family lineage being 8,000 years. And it just gave me a perspective that 8,000 years. Ford Motor, I saw this morning on CNBC, said that in less than 10 years, 50% of their vehicles are gonna be electric. So, the word cars are gonna go away. There's gonna be all sorts of modes of transportation. Most of them will be electric. And so, I think this landscape is gonna change dramatically over the next 20 years.
So I think the two are uniquely intertwined in our community. And I think that the most powerful impact we can have to improve our impact on the environment is with a great regional transit authority. The number-one greenhouse gas issue are single-trip, or single-pick... The number one greenhouse gas issue are single trip, or single-person vehicle miles driven up and down the valley. There's, we also have to realize that there are people that can't be served by public transit. You know, we have a lot of contractors. Contractors can't bring chop saws on a bus. So, you know, it's balancing those two needs, but we do need to make sure that we can get people cheaply and quickly and safely up and down the valley. That's going to be the number one thing we can do. I agree, I think that transportation is going to evolve. I was, unfortunately, had to buy a car. And as I was looking through all the different options that are out there, I saw that Volvo now has essentially a subscription car service where you're not signing a three-year lease, you're not buying a car, but you're signing up for essentially a month-to-month deal with Volvo. It includes insurance, it includes taxes, all of those things, and you can just hand it back. I think that we really need to be looking at, you know, perhaps being the kind of the lead on a car-share service, really promoting bus tang. Gondola is a new app out of Denver that's going to be, you know, hopefully reducing those single commuter trips up here because, you know, Denver is a drive market, we can't stop that. That's who they are. But let's try to work to change how they drive up here because, you know, we need those buses full, and I want every car to have four people if there's four seats.
You touched on something that just sparked a new thought for me. I had a great answer, but I would be interested in knowing the environmental impact of, as we continue to push workforce down valley, and the people that are contractors or might work weird hours or don't know when they're going to get out with their coworkers. I'd like to understand the environmental impact of pushing our work, our workforce further and further down valley. And I think that creates a really interesting opportunity for discussion because as workforce housing is more condensed and closer to home, it does provide us the opportunity to look into things like Zip Cars, direct bus routes. While I've seen disasters with e-bike rental services in other cities, I've also seen places where it works really well and works really well in all-weather conditions. As we move into, it'd be going beyond giving essential workers or working with essential workers to get on an e-bike, making it something that we could have a techno, a technology solution to get workers and guests to be using bikes through Vale would be fantastic. I think in addition, as equal to the people that come up to Vale, to Vale from the Front Range to visit, I think we also need to address how are we serving our workforce and getting them to Vale and how we might be better environmentally served by having some of that population closer.
So, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, pun intended. There are lots of great technologies out there, and there will be more in the coming years. And I think as we're adamant and enthusiastic about protecting and preserving our environment, which is of utmost importance to me, that as those new ideas come forward, we're willing to be leaders to test them and try new things. I loved it last summer when we had the e-bike share service after I worked out some kinks of dragging a bike where the electricity wouldn't work, and that was interesting. Zip Cars are great. My kid's at school in North Carolina without a car, and when he's needed one, that's been a great option for him. So as you're building housing, I, I think we need to think about the parking, and there are reasons that we have the parking requirements that we do. But as we get new technologies and new options, can we reduce that parking by having Zip Cars that people in those developments can share rather than each having their own car that they store for a week and then use once? So there are just lots of opportunities for Vale to be a leader in this, really.
Thank you for asking such a simple question. Environment and transportation in this country are inexorably linked and always have been and will be in the future. As a member of the ECO Board, I've been proposing that we look at smaller, more, smaller vehicles on more frequent schedules. And I do know that the big issue at the moment is hiring drivers. So that's not solved yet. But more vehicles, more frequency, night opportunities will help solve the problem rather than just bigger buses on infrequent schedules which do not attract riders. And I, I've been pushing this now for two years on the ECO Board. We are moving inexorably toward an electric future for cars. And that doesn't mean every car is going to be an electric car, but that's the direction we're going. Vale now has adopted a, not across the fleet, but electrified buses. What that means is there has to be an adequate infrastructure for charging. And it can't just be proprietary charging. That's one of the problems with Tesla. The charges are proprietary. They are now negotiating to expand that network to allow other vehicles and other brands to charge at them. But I like the Zermatt model, which has small vehicles moving very frequently, almost all-electric, for all of their transportation needs in the town. Zermatt is like a folded veil in terms of topography. And there's an awful big, there's a great opportunity for us to look at and possibly adopt that kind of model.
Well, according to Brian, the questions are too easy, so we're going to make it a little more difficult. So, Brian, two years ago, this is for all of you, but two years ago, when you were running for town council and you were thinking of the greatest crisis, COVID wasn't even on the radar. We've just lived through a black swan event, as quotes of some of your fun economists. Tell us a little bit about your thoughts and what, just balance all these needs, if you've lived through COVID, you know, these last 15, 18 months, you know, if you're elected to town council, a little bit of your thought process on the crisis that we're not expecting. You know, how are we going to get, manage that, or what are the tools you're going to bring to that, your past experiences?
Again, another simple question, thank you. COVID really threw us for a loop worldwide, but particularly in, Vale was at the epicenter at the very beginning and was one of the most significant areas in which COVID spread early on. And from here, it spread to Mexico, it spread to California, and lots of other epicenters began to explode that were unrelated to Vale. So it was a very complicated situation. In January, right after I was elected, I had read about the growth of this virus. And in January, at my third meeting, I indicated that there was a problem coming. We didn't know exactly what, what the source was, we didn't know enough about it, but it looked like a severe pandemic. There was laughter in the room, and I remember that vividly. We cannot ignore the importance of this well into the future. It is not over. I can't emphasize that more. I've said before, and I'm sorry to do it again, I've lost 12 friends to this disease around the world. And I am tired of losing friends, and the most recent one was a couple of weeks ago. I'm tired of it. And if we don't do the right thing across the board, wearing masks, getting vaccinated, doing as much as we possibly can to stop the spread of this disease, it's going to continue. And I want us to work hard and stop it.
Well, I, because we don't know what it is, I certainly don't have an answer for it. I do want to say that I think our town council showed extremely good leadership in helping our community through the pandemic. We succeeded in ways that many other communities did not in getting past the hurdle and inviting people back. So I really think they deserve a lot of credit for that. I think whatever comes next, you have to remain educated, you have to be willing to listen to experts, and you have to be able to pivot when decisions have to be made. And you have to have good leaders.
I think that our town definitely got a pressure test with the most recent pandemic and gave some great insight for how we'd handle future black swan events. The budgetary plan that was able to be in place for Vale to tighten its belt was fantastic. I also want to commend the fact that our town council was able to be so creative and nimble and empowering to town staff while working within community health regulations. I have told everyone that will listen, when they say, what did our last, what has our current council done right, the handling of the COVID pandemic. They really put our business, our local businesses at the center of their focus in empowering them to do business outside their four walls, be creative with common consumption alcohol rules. And I was thrilled to see a team working for our town that way. And I think that's what it's going to require to handle any future black swan.
So I, I agree with, you know, Brian's statement. I, it's not going anywhere, at least, you know, not anytime soon. This is something that we're living with, it's evolving. And I think that the most important thing that we can do is, is have leaders that are pragmatic and practical and are willing to listen and acknowledge that they are not the expert in the field unless they are, you know, an epidemiologist. And, you know, I, when it happened, I was so proud of previous town councils and their fiscal responsibility that, that we had, as, as Bob Armour likes to say, a fat bank balance so that we could quickly put money into the community where we needed it, rent, food, you know, childcare, all of those things. It was so empowering to feel secure financially. So I think that that's something that the town, you know, has to do moving forward. We have to be diligent in how we spend our money and how we save our money so that we can react. Because, you know, while this was one black swan event, you know, it was obviously different than 2008, and who knows what's going to be the next one. But, you know, I think it's, it's truly have an open mind, come into it just knowing that you're going to listen to as many people and then make the best decision that you can because there is no perfect answer. It's, they're, they're fluid situations, they're evolving, and you have to be willing to pivot quickly, as Kim said, and, and, and just maybe turn on a whole, you know, 180 because you've learned new information.
So I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact on your, on your question in terms of threats. One of the visible, there's visible threats that we know, we can see, there's invisible threats we don't know about. A threat that we can see in our community is overcrowding, overcrowding on Vale Mountain. I'm sure all of us have friends that say, well, I don't ski on Saturday or Sunday morning, you know, I got hit two years ago, or I got, you know, a friend got, you know, an arm broken. So I think that's a threat. And we, we have a Wall Street-backed company who wants to sell passes, right? And I, I just don't think they're doing a good job in terms of limiting the number of people to, which diminishes the experience on Vale Mountain, we all know that. The flip side of that is parking. Technology has moved a long ways. So if you're coming up from Denver, wouldn't you like to know you had a parking spot in Vale as opposed to, you know, halfway to East Vale? You know, there's, there's apps now where you can reserve a parking spot. We really need to go in that direction, I think aggressively as we, in terms of our existing parking spots and then as we expand our parking into the future. But I consider overcrowding, minimizing experience is, is a threat that I see.
So again, I've lived here for 40 years. We have lived through good and bad snow years, an ongoing drought, and a recession. So being resilient in a post-COVID world is an opportunity to explore new avenues. I agree with all of what you've said. We need good leadership to listen, be creative and innovative, be proactive, to pivot, like Kim said, with new technology, new technologies to continue to be resilient in case there is another black swan. That's about all I have to say about that. Cross our fingers it won't be too drastic.
So, speaking of black swan events, you know, we, we have a, a problem, which is the beauty that surrounds us. That being said, I believe that we can mitigate future hazards by, by looking at the past, what the past council just did. I was actually out of town for most of it, I was working on an ambulance in Denver. So when I'd come up, you know, all the rules were the same between here and Denver, but the difference in Denver was just mayhem, to, to put it shortly. But, you know, with the, the budget that Vale set up, you know, definitely don't want to blow that on anything, just keep the tradition of the previous councils going forward. That way we can navigate any future black swan events. Thank you.
Well, I think that the town of Vale did an excellent job with COVID. I personally utilized the rent and grocery relief, and I needed it, and it was, it was amazing that it was there. But, you know, if we have something else that, that hits our community like COVID, pretty much just, I think we should follow the same path that we did before. Yet, we, we have to be willing to make unpopular decisions for the greater good. For example, right now at Shakedown, we're enforcing a mandatory vaccinations to get in, and people do not like it when they come in from out of town. I've been getting screamed at at the door, and, yeah, it sucks, but it's, it's the most responsible thing to be doing. Otherwise, we wouldn't be getting the musical acts into the bar, and then we're not a live music venue anymore. So being able to make decisions like that and enforce them, I think, is the most important part of it. But, I mean, we're doing a great job with the, with COVID now. We have the highest vaccination rate by county in the state, that's excellent. Just, you know, following all that.
We enjoy discussing COVID like it's something in our rearview mirror. It is not, and it's very much still with us. And, well, I applaud the council and the town staff for the excellent job they did from a fiduciary standpoint and their assistance to businesses and to renters the last year. I felt very much left alone as a business owner when I was the one having to enforce a mask rule to come to my window. I think we need uniform rules as to how we're going to proceed going forward. To Kirk's point, I agree absolutely that we are in an overcrowding situation now that is also going to detrimentally impact the quality of our life and the detriment of the quality, quality of the skier experience. There do exist apps that not only encourage people to reserve parking, that encourage them to not use their car. And I would like to see parking on the Frontage Road ended before somebody gets killed because in my worst nightmares, I see a child waiting to go skiing, getting anxious while his parents are getting ready, and stepping into the street on an icy road. And that would be a tragedy, and I'd like to see that averted before it happens. Finally, there is, in fact, a skiers-at-one-time management level of 19,900 skiers at one time, and we need to insist that Vale Resorts upholds that.
Could you give me the question again? I don't want to make the same mistake.
Sure, not a problem. It's a long, it's a long distance, all the way across the back bowls. Yeah, my question was, you know, I, I started with, with Brian, when he was running for council two years ago, COVID wasn't on the horizon yet. You know, it became this black swan event that we all of a sudden had to deal with. So my question was, if you're elected to council, sort of your thought processes in dealing with the crisis that you don't see coming?
Well, and, and that's, that's the problem. Kim's right, how do you respond if you, if you, how do I respond now if I don't know what that is, other than to look at the preparation that went, went on prior to, to COVID coming? And, and I think you look at what the, the town staff did, the council reacted amazingly. And I think that the, that it was a combined effort, but that the, the staff also played a large part in that. And having that recession plan in place to be able to, to really work through the needs that came up and, and, and not go too far into other funds was, was important. And I, I think that's, that's probably the biggest area that you can, you can focus on is preparation like that, that I don't know what you can do with the what-ifs. I think the next black swan event could be more of an environmental nature, and, and it could be local, or it could be something a little further away. We had the, the smoke here all summer, but it was certainly a lot worse in Denver. So there'll be a whole set of other, other things that we have to do to react to that.
Perfect. You know, we've covered a lot of stuff tonight, and I'll just interject by saying that I am an optimist by nature. I, I've lived in a world for many, many years where I saw a lot of very bad things. When my family decided where we could move, we purposely picked Vale because I saw Vale best years were still ahead of it, that it's an amazing place to raise a family and a community. So I see that because I look up here, and amongst all of you, there are about 1,000 years of residency in this valley. So I am looking this much on it, but yet, here I am, moderating this debate, hopefully trying to do an okay job. But looking at the glass half-full, that, yes, we have challenges. But looking at the glass half full, that yes, we have challenges and such like that. So I'm going to ask one more question and then we're going to take a few questions from the audience. And so I'll start with you, Pete. You've lived here your whole life. Where do you see Vale in 10 years? And I'm not going to direct you any direction you want to take this question for all of you, but you could look in your little snow globe and shake it and say, what does Vale look like in 10 years as a result of your participation and serving on the council?
I think that we're going to see a couple of things that right away, I-70 will be completely different 10 years from now with the a number of electric vehicles that are on the road. All that will be slowing down or the effect of that will be changing. I think the housing by 20 or 2031, we're we'll be past our our goal of the thousand. I know it's not enough, but it will have made a substantial dent. I I'm encouraged by what I hear tonight when everybody talks about the need for a living wage and and the ability for people to really live here and and for this community to grow. So I I really think that that we're we're building towards a much better Vale. There are concerns I have about traffic on the mountain and about how we can work with Vale Resorts to to maintain a quality of experience up there that I think would match the quality that we can all work towards down here. So that's something that'll need to happen because it's either you have to to use price to limit the number of skiers or you have to create some more terrain because you can't keep adding lift capacity and and not give people more room.
I think your dad once said, we can get as many people up that mountain as you want to. The problem eventually is going to be getting them down. I would like to see Vale continue to be an amazing community. I would like to see young people to be able to come here, enjoy a season and then say, hey, you know what? Let's try and make a go of it. I think we have the opportunity to create those opportunities. I'm also an optimist. I think we have the ability and the wherewithal and the intelligence to be able to address the issues of in front of us intelligently and move forward. I would like to see people be able, you know, the worker housing, I I don't want to see worker storage. I want to see community building housing. I want to see community building projects like Chamonix. I want to see play, people be invested, kids playing in the neighborhoods. This matters. People from all walks of life living next to each other and enjoying the mountains is a huge, huge thing.
I wouldn't necessarily consider myself an optimist. I think I would rather refer to myself as a pragmatist. That being said, I do believe that we have the resources and the collective drive to make this town as good as we can get it in 10 years. I I do think it's going to be an even better place to live. I think that people are, I think that we will find a way to get people to stay here and want to like build their whole lives here. And I think that we're going to see a resurgence of Vale's awesome ski town culture, you know? Touch the Warren Miller movies coming back and I, you know, I would love to see that. I think that everybody else would love to see that. I think it's going to be good for the town. And on a more selfish note, I think that hopefully by then we'll have better terrain parks on the mountain. Could definitely use a little bit of work. But I I think that all the issues that we've addressed tonight, I think we do have the ability to address them and make this place better.
In 10 years from now, I see Vale growth with fair and equity for for everyone that that wants to put into the system. Like Jonathan was saying, seeing children playing in the streets again. You know, we're on a precipice where it's either you're going to have a Vale experience or a generic mountain town experience. They might as well go to Copper Mountain if we don't keep the soul of Vale within You know, hopefully have more housing. Hopefully we address the crowding on the mountain with without incurring more into the terrain of the white national forest. You know, we could work with our partners, Vale Resorts, to deal with that as far as the housing goes, you know? Maybe, you know, we can't build on everything, so we work with our partners, Avon, which has their own problems and Edwards equally. So and and we we can all solve it together, but right now we need to approve or improve Vale for Vale.
All right. Pete, I think these are your father's words. I'm not sure, but Vale was built for skiers by skiers. So buys gears for skiers. And I think in 10 years, we will see a vibrant and balanced community. I think we've reached a tipping point and we have all of the resources and the human capital behind it to balance what we want to see with the environment, our recreation. We have lots of local agencies and different nonprofit organizations that are working very hard to make this community the way it was. Yes, we need to address the overcrowding issue. I love your parking idea. There's others we can come up with as well. I I I think we need to address the epic past situation and 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 perhaps have some sort of way of relegating zip codes for pricing. I I think in 10 years, this town is going to be back to what we want it to be as a home based community that is full of pride and love for our nature, our mountain and the people that live in it so that when we can drive down I-70 and go, ah, this is my home. I am so happy to be here.
So Vale's a prestigious place to live. I mentioned before, there's millions of people around the world that have a little piece of Vale, you know, in their hearts and would love to live in Vale. So it does attract, I think, you know, the best and the brightest. So I think the problems will be solved. 10 years, yes, I'm optimistic. 20 years, actually more optimistic as we go from 4G to 5G to 6G. Data communications is just going to be amazingly fast. So you can communicate with the world instantly, voice, video, you know, everything. Certainly you'll be able to, as we do now, you can work anywhere. So if you can work anywhere in the world where we do want to, you know, live, well, I had some some good rid, good runs down forever, so let me try Vale. I I just, I think that I think the problems will be solved. I I, you know, the council now is just full of, you know, bright people. Yeah, we have challenges, but I think we're going to get through it. So thanks.
So 10 years from now, Vale is still going to be amazing. It's going to be and it's going to be that I have no doubt because there's 10 people up here that are passionate about fighting for Vale. And behind these 10 people, there's thousands of people that are passionate about fighting for Vale, whether they're locals or they're tourists. You know, I know we're going to be more fire resilient because we're improving building codes and Mark Novak has got his guys out there educating the community. I know that we're going to be better from a carbon and carbon footprint because we're adding buses and we're talking about bike share. You know, hopefully, you know, the way that Zoom and remote work and all of those things have evolved, we're going to have a red sandstone school that's vibrant. We have 40 or 50 new students there this year, which is the opposite of the way that school was trending. And so that's a positive thing for community. I think that the flip side of that is going to be the challenge that those remote workers are earning different wages than what people are earning here that are servicing them in ski shops, in restaurants. So we're going to have to continue to struggle to to make sure that we find that balance. And, you know, I know that we'll still be having hard conversations 10 years from now, but I think that that is how we grow and become better. So I'm optimistic. I'm not so optimistic to say it will be solved, but I'm optimistic that I know we'll be moving in the right direction.
Yeah, it's hard to not be optimistic when you have 10 people turning up for a local election and a room filled with people on a rainy Tuesday night. I am excited about the technology based solutions we're going to see. We're going to see transportation change dramatically and it's going to change the way guests get to our town and enjoy it. I'm also really encouraged to hear several voices echoing that they understand that part of us having a vibrant and evolving future that continues our legacy of excellence as a resort mountain town in that I'm hearing a lot of people are willing to have difficult conversations with the mountain company. You know, Vale Resorts is a data driven company and they're making decisions that might not be completely apparent or in lockstep with our decisions. But when I hear people on councils say that they have a clear vision of what they want in their mountain town, that to me says they are going to be willing to stand up to the largest industry in town. And we need to be better. We're very fortunate with the partnership we have compared to some towns, but I strive for a better partnership and I strive for more clear communication because ultimately the roots of this town are attached to that ski hill.
We're going to be the world's premier mountain resort community, not just North America's. We're going to have a strong economy and vibrant neighborhoods.
That's a wonderful future.
I know.
In answer to your question, I'm an optimist, but I'm also an analyst. And most of my work has been analytical, for years it's been analytical. I've talked recently to Beth Howard about whether or not Vale Resorts is planning for the lack of snow. And it needs to be planning for a year or more sometime in the future, five years, 50 years, I don't know. But when we will have significantly less snow and winter will be significantly less important and summer and fall and spring will be more important. I've pushed very hard to expand our summer Vale opportunities and we've been doing that. It's been very crowded and not everyone has loved that, but it's significant that we have had a lot of economic input into town in the summertime and in the fall and in the spring, which we didn't see 20 years ago at all. And that's a significant change. But I am concerned about drought. I am concerned about there not being adequate snow for winter recreation and the concomitant ultimate effect that will have on our water supply. Water is the water, water is the the fuel of life. And if we don't have water and if we don't have snow, then we are going to be a very dry valley. We are lucky right now, snow and for any outside, I'm delighted. West of here, the rest of the country is in significant drought, but it's right on our borders. And so I hope we are significantly planning for dealing with that as soon as possible. And it's an environmental issue, as Kim has often told me, and I agree with her. And so that's the direction. I am an optimist, but I do want to really analyze where we're going.
Well, I was optimistic you would all follow the rules and you have. And our timekeeper has been amazing, so thank you for that. And thank you for all being here. And since you followed the rules, you're stuck with one last question, a 30 second closing question as we run out of time. You're clearly all passionate about serving this town. You're taking the time to be here tonight. You're out there campaigning, you're running. We'll mix it up, so you don't feel like you're picking on us. We'll start with you. If you're not elected, you know, in 30 seconds, how are you going to continue to contribute to this community?
By doing what I've been doing. I actually was recently appointed to the design review board, so I will continue to be a part of that. I also am excited to get onto some of these other committees that the town has. I am on the board, I'm actual the treasurer of the Mountain Valley Horse Rescue up in McCoy, so I've taken that on with a passion. And I'm part of the Eagle County Wildlife Roundtable. So I've been writing letters for the Vale Daily and I will continue to do that about situations regarding wildlife and humans.
Perfect. Kirk?
So.
Remember, 30 second lightning round here.
So I'm on the on the Vale Rec Board. We have challenges in in Vale Recreation. We have some gaps in terms of providing services for the communities. I'm going to continue to be on the Vale Rec Board. I just got on this year. I'm on the liquor board. Vale has 105 liquor licenses. That's kind of an important part to the overall dining and eating experience. I'm going to continue to do that and, you know, ski with my granddaughters soon, hopefully. So.
Jermaine?
I had no idea any of these boards existed before we met a couple of weeks ago. With that being said, you know, if I can make an impact serving on one of those other boards, I'll whichever one I can get on, I'll do my best to get on and and still make an impact. Other than that, try to get out in the community, try to volunteer more. You know, all I do right now is work and hang out with my daughter and maybe get her involved in volunteering as well. You know, it it's really good at a young age to learn public service and and what it takes. Thank you.
Well, I've been serving on the Vale Symposium Board for some time and I support that both by service and financial. I think the gem of this town is Bravo. It's an extraordinary performing arts opportunity for this town and it's the only music festival in the country that attracts four major orchestras every year. And I do everything I can to support Bravo because it brings people into town. And I've gotten criticized before for saying what I'm about to say. I want people in town who spend money. And Bravo brings people to town who spend money.
Well, I would probably reapply to commission on special events and hopefully be reappointed to that. I still would have five months left in the Vale Rec District Board and just would look for opportunities. I I got on the Colorado Real Estate Commission just by one day perusing statewide volunteer opportunities and applied and was lucky enough to be appointed. So I, one important thing, you don't have to be on a board to participate. So go to town, I would go to town council meetings, go to Vale Local Housing Authority meetings, visit with our Eagle County Commissioners. It's just important to stay educated and involved. You don't have to be on a board to do that.
If I'm not elected, I'm going to keep showing up. I'm going to keep volunteering and showing up for boards and having an open door happy hour policy at my house and mentoring the kids in my neighborhood. And I'm going to be riding my bike on the North Trail and I'm going to be skinning on the mountain and I'm going to be telling everybody that will listen why I think this is the best place on the planet to live. I love this town. I love to talk about this town and I promise to keep showing up. When you asked what's going to happen in 10 years, I had a shocking vision of myself sitting here again. I'm going to keep showing up, don't you? Even if you keep telling me no.
Take back Travis. Well, Ziggy will be gone, so you'll have a lot of free time.
He'll be running against me.
Yeah, probably. You know, the same, I, it's been eye opening to see how many different ways you can can engage with the community. Probably the number one board I want to get on is AIPP, the Art in Public Places. I think it's a really cool thing that we have in our community and it's a, you know, a unique way that we can differentiate ourselves. The Vale Valley Mountain Trails or Vale Mountain Trails Alliance is another one that I'm so grateful for everything that they've been doing in the community. And then I guess probably the the last one would be the, not the Front Rangers, but we had the folks that are at the trailheads just, you know, educating all of those trail users because, you know, that part of our community is just being loved to death. And I think we really need to raise awareness on, you know, how we can make sure that we take care of that treasured asset. So that's an easy one on a on a weekend to spend a couple hours talking to folks.
You go.
So if I don't make it on town council this year, I'll probably move. I'm just kidding. No, I I won't get discouraged. Kevin Foley, who is, who pretty much got me to run for town council this year, he's the guy that came up to me two years ago and brought the idea to me. He's like, if you don't make it, don't get discouraged. And that has stuck with me. There are so many cool boards to, you know, to help out on and I guess I've talked to all my new friends I've made up here, whoever did make it in, I'll see what's available and what I can help with.
There is a long history of involvement in the community on behalf of the members of the community, so I will continue to be involved in whatever way, shape or form I feel is appropriate and useful to the community. So, yeah.
I'd like to stay on the Planning and Environmental Commission. I've been on for a little under two years and it's been a great experience and there's a lot to be learned there. So I'd love to stay on that and and then continue working with the Trails Alliance.
Well, I'd like to just say, you know, thank you for all of you, V CBA, TBA, Vale Daily, I think you're sitting behind me, the Vale Board of Realtors, obviously. You know, you're all in a progressive group and you're all committed for picking this out in a tough environment and best of luck to all of you and thank you all for coming. And best of luck to all of you and thank you all for coming.
Well done.